Ready? We'll call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. We'll do an adoption of the agenda first.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, thank you, Councilor Meister. Moving on, regular minute, uh, meeting. Oh, sorry, motion, sorry. I'm not into, I'm still in admitted. Motion, discussions, all in favor? Moving on, uh, regular meeting minutes for November eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Everyone read those? Anyone like to adopt those?
I will make a motion to adopt the regular council meetings from November eighth as presented.
Thank you, Councilor Zimmer. Any discussion? Motion forward with that?
So moved.
Motion carried. Um, moving on to delegation, then Clare's Home Coordinated Community Response to Elder Abuse Coalition. If Gabrielle Kirk here?
Hi, thank you. Hi, thanks, everyone. So I'm Gabrielle Kirk, and I'm the coordinator of the Coordinated Community Response to Elder Abuse Program, uh, but we just call it CCR for short. And I've been in this, uh, position for five years now. So the CCR was established back in August twenty sixteen in our response to a growing number of elder abuse concerns happening in the community. With thirty-six percent of the population being over the age of sixty, it became a priority in the community for multiple agencies to work together to prevent and respond to elder abuse concerns. Um, so over the years, we've been dedicated to, um, implementing and maintaining a ongoing community response model and support network for elder abuse. And our primaries areas of work include education and awareness, case management, and advocating for structural change for the prevention of elder abuse. We have a very diverse coalition, so, um, we have multiple representatives from organizations across Clare's Home and surrounding communities who have common goals in addressing elder abuse. So organizations include but are limited to the FCSS, RCMP, Mental Health Clinic, uh, the Drop-In Center, the Housing Authority, Porcupine Hills Lodge, Rowan House Emergency Shelter, Calgary Rural Primary Care Network, and various Departments of Alberta Health Services. So I'm here today to request, um, for there to be town council representation on our CCR as it would help ensure the coalition is working, um, in the community's best interest. Um, Clare's Home's largest demographic is seniors, so it is vital to have a safe and age-friendly community. And having town council representation would carry political legitimacy for us, um, which could help advocate for sustainable funding and structural change both at the federal and provincial level. Um, and we do hold a firm belief that the coalition is an integral part of the community. And we hope to maintain and advance this work, um, through the years coming, through the support and commitment of multiple agencies and representatives, including the Town of Clare's Home. So, yeah, that was mostly what I had to say.
Well done.
Do you have some questions, Councilor Cutler?
I, I do have some questions. Thank you, Mayor. With regards to having a town council as a representative, uh, with a little understanding of what the CCR project does with the investigation and those types of things, would the liaison of the town council be between the support of the town? I just, I worry about the extra added thing of a council to be going into some of these intimate, hard cases. Is there a branch of just general meetings? Is there a branch of investigation? Is there different committees within the CCR?
Yes, and thank you for bringing that up because that is a really good point. So, uh, we've kind of split it into two ones where there's core membership and associate membership. So core membership would be people who would actually be involved in, um, case management and, and responding to incidences where, um, associate man, membership would be more, um, maintaining the momentum and, and more of the general coalition work and stuff. So, we would, I mean, privacy and confidentiality of our clients is the number one most important thing. So, um, for someone from town council, if we had representation from them, they would not be involved in case management, but more just advancing our work for, um, advocating for structural change and, and, um, just ensuring the sustainability of the coalition. And just ensuring that we're reflecting the needs of the community.
Thank you.
All my concerns have been addressed.
Thank you. Any further questions? So I guess we can just take that confirmation to, to discuss further about this, correct?
Yeah.
Perfect. Um, so, yeah, so thank you, Gabrielle, for coming in.
Thank you. And I, I know committing to a coalition always, I know lots of people have a lot of stuff on their plate, so I don't want to put too much pressure on you, but just, I think town council representation would be important, but we do recognize that everyone's plates are full and stuff, so we wouldn't try and take up too much of your time. It would mostly be the commitment of a monthly one-hour meeting and then plus reviewing documents and, and just.
Yeah, so when, when it was brought up at the last meeting two weeks ago, I just had some concerns around the role of what the town council would be particip- you explaining the associate and the core role just cleared all that up, but it's just more of the understanding of what the role would be as a town council in that position.
No, that's a very fair concern.
Yeah, appreciate that clarity, and I, I thank you very much for.
Yeah, so thank you again for coming in, and we appreciate you coming in and clarifying that for us.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, and I don't think we have any further questions or concerns, and it was great, thank you so much.
Thanks, Gabrielle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, we'll be moving on to public hearings. Bylaw number one, seven, two, eight, road closure by law. Can I have someone adjourn the meeting to hold the public hearing by law for number one, seven, two, eight?
I will make that motion to close the general meeting, the regular meeting.
Thank you. And.
All in favor?
All in favor? Carry forward, and can we have a motion to go into this public hearing, please?
Take a move.
Thank you, Councilor Kettles. Um, all in favor? Carry to go into the public hearing. Do you have any comments from the public in regards to this?
Uh, we do not. Uh, the, and there's, the notice of the, um, bylaw, first reading, has been circulated to, uh, the public. Uh, it's been published in the newspaper and to utility, utilities companies. Um, and there's been no feedback, um, and there's nobody here from the public today wishing to speak to this. The utility companies did, uh, respond, but they had no concerns with this road closure.
With that being said, do we need to go give a second and third, that, for that to come to order, or?
No, at this point, um, the process is that we have first hearing, we circulate, uh, sorry, we have first reading of the bylaw, and then we circulate about the public hearing after that. Then we, um, we send the bylaw to the minister, um, and then we'll have second and third, uh, readings of the bylaw after we hear back from the, the minister.
Wonderful. All right then, any questions? Can I have a motion to close this public hearing?
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Councilor Meister, all in favor. Public hearing closed. Can I get a motion to reconvene in the regular meeting minutes? Thank you, Councilor Carlson, all in favor. Motion carried. Moving forward, we will go into action items. Number one, correspondence by his Honorable Jason Keddie, Premier of Alberta.
So council, just to, uh, before we get into all these correspondence items, many of them on the agenda are just congratulating council, uh, on the, on the election. Um, and so, uh, to start us off, we have one from the premier, uh, congratulating council, uh, on the election. Um, there's a little bit of talk in there about economic downturn, uh, over the COVID-nineteen, and some talk about, uh, the recovery, uh, economic recovery. They have, uh, high hopes, uh, for economic recovery. And, and lastly, um, the premier is looking forward to working with councils across the province, uh, moving into this term, so.
Thank you. Any questions or comments with that before moving on? All right, moving on to number two, correspondence. Private Honorable Rick MacIver, Minister of Municipal Affairs, Ape?
Uh, very similar, very similar correspondence from the Minister of Municipal Affairs as well. You'll notice that they're using the word collaborate in both of them. I think that's a focus for the provincial government, uh, um, in the correspondence, that they are looking to collaborate, and hopefully, um, that proves true, uh, council, uh, that we can have good collaborative relationships, uh, with, uh, both the province and, uh, municipal affairs.
Any comments before moving on to further information? Moving on to number three, correspondence. Honorable Casey McDue, Minister of Justice and Solicitor General, Ape?
Yeah. So the, um, Provincial Police Service Transition Study, uh, has been made available. There is a link, um, in this correspondence, uh, where you can review, um, the, that study. Uh, there are several highlights of the study, uh, as outlined by the minister here. Um, what they're looking to do is increase the number of frontline police officers and civilians, uh, specialists serving the communities, uh, dedicated mental health nurses and social workers to assist frontline police, um, more internal recruitment and retention of officers. At this point, this is what the province is saying they're looking to do, uh, by having the provincial, uh, provincial police service, and there will be further engagement sessions throughout the province, um, next year, early next year, probably it looks like first quarter. They'll be, um, doing town halls and also virtual information sessions. They'll be coming through to Clare's Home, um, on January the twenty-fifth, and there's a link on here to, uh, where you can register to, uh, be part of that.
Any questions or comments? Can we take this as further information then?
But it does say there in the first paragraph that it's important to notice that there's been no decision made on this yet.
Thank you, Councilor Cutler, appreciate that. Anything further? No? Moving on to number four, correspondence. Alberta. Um, but, um, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, the Alberta Ombudsman, um, oversees fair treatment, um, to the public in, in the public sector. And if there are complaints, uh, that's, that's an avenue for members of the public. If they feel they've been treated unfairly, the ombudsman, uh, is who they go to. And that is, uh, for public institutions across the province, including municipalities. Um, and so this is an information brief. Uh, it looks like they did an engagement session with the public, and one thing they found was that the public, it seems like the public had a lot of questions about what they did. So they've got frequently asked questions as a result. Uh, and they also have, um, an attachment detailing, um, fair, um, processes. It looks like a lot of municipalities, or some rather municipalities are rolling out, uh, grant, energy efficiency grant rebate programs. Um, and perhaps they're, if I'm reading between the lines, uh, it maybe hasn't always rolled out fairly. And so they're, they're providing, uh, tips on how, how municipalities can roll those grant programs out fairly. But, uh, that's about the gist of it, I think. Any comments from council on that?
Take this for information as well? Wonderful. Move on to number five, and correspondence. Climate Caucus. Can we move that to you, Abe?
Sure. Um, so there's a group called the Climate Caucus, and they're inviting, uh, elected officials to join their network. It does say here that you will, uh, join as individuals, not as official council representatives. However, you are joining, um, to be part of elected-only network calls, so I'm not quite sure what, what that means. But there, there, it looks like there is resources there, um, for elected officials, in terms of, uh, maybe some training sessions and, um, policies, and maybe best practices around, uh, food security, agriculture, nature-based solutions, uh, food and plastic waste reduction, and climate justice. Um, and they've got case studies of bylaws, resolutions, again, uh, best practices. It looks like it's an information sharing group. Uh, they're inviting council, uh, to join, so if, I would say if you have an interest, um, and go ahead and sign up and, and see if there's any, any value there.
Any questions or comments? Can we move that for information as well? Uh, I guess moving on to number six, correspondence. Alberta Health Services, AHS, welcome to, welcome to all Calgary's only municipal leaders.
Again, another, uh, post-election welcome. This one's from Alberta Health Services. A couple highlights of this, uh, correspondence is, uh, they've created a community partners and stakeholders webpage uh, to provide regular updates and information for municipal leaders around the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Uh, and they've also created an AHS facilities ICU updates and temporary space reductions webpage, where you can find current information on any changes in service delivery across the province. Uh, there's going to be some form of virtual engagement, uh, in the new year, and, uh, they'll be connecting with us further, it looks like, with the council further, to invite, uh, council to, to that conversation. Uh, but in the meantime, they've, uh, left their contact information. If any members of council have any issues or concerns, um, they, it looks like they're interested in connecting, uh, with, with people. They hear their concerns and working with councils.
Questions, concerns with that? Any comments? Nope, can we take that for information as well? Number seven, correspondence. Library Association of Alberta. Congratulations to town council. Ape?
Yeah, uh, this is the Library Association of Alberta, and they're advocating for local libraries, just pushing the importance of, uh, the collaboration between the municipality and the libraries. Obviously, the local libraries across the province rely heavily on, uh, on funding and support from municipalities. Um, it's no different in, in Clare's Home, and they're just pushing that, that advocacy for, for all their public libraries. Uh, obviously, the library does a tremendous, uh, provides a tremendous service to our community.
Any comments, questions, concerns in regards to that? Nope, moving forward, we can take that as information, and we'll move forward to correspondence. Community Futures of Alberta Southwest, seeking nominations for board decisions, Ape?
Um, just a reminder to everybody to please, uh, speak correctly into the mics. We're getting a little bit of feedback here from people. So we've got an invitation from Community Futures Alberta Southwest, not to be confused with Alberta Southwest. Community Futures provides, uh, loans to small business. And, uh, they're looking for recruitment of a board member. It looks like there's an opening, uh, for this region. Um, and council or economic development committees or chambers can nominate someone. So that's what they're looking for. It's a three-year appointment. Uh, maximum number of terms is three years. Uh, is there any appetite from council to nominate anybody or pass this on to the Economic Development Committee perhaps to, uh, see if they have a better idea of who to nominate for something like that?
Yeah, I think it would be best to push it to EDC, and they can bring back somebody.
Yes, I agree.
I agree.
We'll pass this on to, uh.
Would you like us to motion for that?
Yes, please.
Would anyone like to motion that? Councilor Carlson will motion? Questions?
So moved by Councilor Carlson to direct administration to pass on this request to the Economic Development Committee to ask for their recommendation to council in order for an appointment to be made.
Questions, concerns, comments? All in favor? Motion passed. Moving on then to number nine, correspondence. South Grove Regional Economic Development, RE, elected officials' information, Abe?
There is, uh, some economic development training for elected officials, uh, scheduled. It's one day, in-person course, uh, scheduled for January twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, there's some information on here and what you can expect to take out of that training. Uh, it looks like the first thirty registrants are free from South Grove, South Grove Member Councils, that's us. So just let us know, council, if you have any interest. I think, I think that is a pretty cool, uh, probably a pretty cool training to have. Uh, and I would, uh, encourage you, if you have time to, to do it, um, and if you just want to connect with us, we can register you, um, maybe connect with Karine, if that's all right. Or we can do it right now if you're interested. Just let us know.
Does anyone?
I'd plan on goings.
I would also like to attend as well.
It's probably a good idea for me to attend as well.
Okay, we'll book that.
Thank you. Any other? Anyone else want to join us on that date?
Not at this time.
Been there, done that, got the T-shirt.
I think that'll be great representation from this council.
I agree.
I concur.
Moving on to number ten then, correspondence. Clare's Home District Chamber of Commerce, RE, Alberta Film and Film Industry, Film Friendly Municipalities, Ape?
Uh, correspondence from the chamber, just encouraging, uh, council. They're advocating for the film industry and encouraging, encouraging council to have, um, policies and bylaws and, and processes in place that will facilitate, um, uh, film activity in Clare's Home. Uh, and I believe at the last EDO, the Economic Development Officer received, um, uh, direction from the committee to go ahead and pursue this. Um, so I, I don't think we need any action from council on this tonight, as it's already in the works through the Economic Development Committee.
And what does that look like? He's going to be looking at our bylaws and, and, and stuff to see if they're compliant with bringing stuff in and make recommendations?
So, uh, the direction is to connect with Fort McLeod, um, and see what kind of policies and processes they have in place and bring back recommendations. Fort McLeod has had a fair bit of filming activity over the years in, in, in the town, so.
Any other questions in regards to this?
High River and Longview, they could probably reach out to as well.
Could probably reach out to High River and Longview as well. I know that area's been filmed a bit, too.
Interstellar.
Wow.
It was filmed there.
Wow.
So we can just move that for information for the time being, I guess, if there's no other questions or comments in regards to it?
Yes.
And then, moving on to number eleven, request for decision, library endowment, Ape?
Uh, the town was, uh, approached by a charitable organization, asking if they'd be able to receive a donation, um, from, uh, from that group on behalf of the library. And it looks like it will be twenty-five thousand dollars annually. And we can definitely, uh, facilitate that donation and forward that on to, uh, the library group. The funds, it's been requested that they're used for programming and equipment. And we do have, uh, some members, I'm not sure if they're prepared to, to talk to this at all, um, but we do have some members from, uh, the library and CIBC. Uh, if you have any questions, um, uh, they might be able to answer, but the, the motion, administration's looking for a motion just to approve the, the town accepting this donation.
This is a, this is an incredibly generous donation. Um, at this point, it's just year to year, or is there any commitment on length of time, or any thought around that?
I can ask you that. So, um, so donor's intention is donating?
I, I think you probably need to speak into a mic.
Can we get her into the microphone? Thank you.
So the donor's intention is to donate, or an endowment of twenty-five thousand dollars, adjusted for inflation per year. At the time of his passing, his executor will calculate how much has been donated and donate an equivalent amount to the charity of a million dollars. And approximately twenty-five thousand dollars of that will continue to be paid each year.
Beautiful, that, that's, we're speechless with, you know, that.
It's like, sorry, can you repeat yourself? Yes, Councilor Cutler.
So I do have one question around the clarity of, so that money is donated for equipment and, and, and.
Programming.
Programming. Is there a, who, who accounts for that? Do we, are we responsible for tracking that, or the donation's just made and the library takes care of that?
Yes, the library would be accountable for that.
We won't be administering anything, it'll just kind of be going.
No, just accepting on behalf of the library.
That's what I was, perfect. Yeah, we're, we're, we're flabbergasted, so.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yes, yes.
Does anyone have any other questions?
No.
No. Can we get a motion to accept, acknowledge, and acknowledge the donation? Councilor Cutler? Make that motion, question?
So moved by Councilor Cutler to accept and acknowledge the very generous annual donation of twenty-five thousand dollars for the benefit of the Clare's Home Public Library for programming and equipment, and confirm that the funds will be used for this purpose.
Any further thoughts or discussion? Are we all still pretty?
Other than wow.
Overwhelmed and very thankful? Any, any other comments? All in favor? I think it's pretty straight across the board, motion passed. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I think. I know, I know it's a, an, an anonymous donation, but we want to, I think on behalf of all of us, we can all say thank you, and, and it will be very well-used and very appreciated within our community. Thank you. I'm sure she's watching tonight, or she's watching tonight, or.
I'm still speechless, so thank you. Thank you for that, yes.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Motion through, so we can get our thoughts together after that?
We should leave that for the end.
Yeah, that was great. Sorry, I guess moving on, sorry, moving on from there, that's, I wish we could throw confetti and celebrate.
Yeah.
A little bit larger, thank you guys. Um, I guess moving on to number twelve, request for decision. Uh, the Range Road, gravel road experience, Ape?
Um, there's, um, a group that has come to Clare's Home, uh, to host a cycling event, uh, out in the EMD. That's a hundred and twenty-kilometer, uh, circuit. The group first came in twenty-twenty, uh, to do this race, uh, but it looks like COVID, uh, kind of derailed, uh, their plans. But they did have a race last year, uh, somewhere around a hundred and fifty-five participants. Um, by all accounts, the, it went great, um, and so they're looking to, to do it again in twenty-twenty-two. Um, I think this is a great event for the community. And what we're looking for here is three motions from council. Uh, the first motion is to approve the staging, the beginning and the end of the race, uh, at the campground. Uh, area, most likely kind of ball-diamond type area. Uh, the second, the second motion is, uh, they're looking to pay for a, a five-dollar shower fee uh, for all the riders. They would like to have those facilities, uh, so just to approve that. Uh, and lastly, um, what we can do is have advanced, uh, booking for the campground or preferred, uh, preferred, um, booking of the campground for attendance, uh, uh, participants rather, uh, of the race. Uh, and we can have that open until, um, May the thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, uh, for riders to have advanced, uh, registration to those sites. Uh, I, I think it's great that this group has, uh, chosen this area, uh, and, uh, just would, uh, I think this is a good, good thing for the town.
Any comments or thoughts in regards to this?
Um, the only other thing I'd like to point out is that, uh, they are looking for volunteers in a couple of different categories. Um, so I think, I believe they're going to reach out to some of the service groups. Um, but if we can advocate for that, I think that would be wonderful.
Yeah, and it's an event that just keeps getting bigger and bigger and more recognized every year, and I think it's great for our community, great for our roads out in the hills, and it, they say it's an excellent venue for them, so I think promoting this and supporting them. I'll be the first to put my hat in the rain, I will volunteer that day, uh, because, yeah, it's just something that, that is very good for our community that just keeps getting bigger, so supporting it, I think, is very important.
Councilor Cutler, I thought you might be participating in riding, or?
I have a medical condition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, question, uh, and maybe I don't know the relationship with our operator of our campground. Is there any concern there about, you know, there's folks that come through there all the time, you know, do we have enough room? Or we just hold it open for a limited time, and whoever books, when it's full, it's. And whoever books, when it's full, it's full? Is that the process?
That's correct, yeah. And I did speak with Denise Spencer today, and I asked her any concerns at all around the campground from last time, and she had no concerns whatsoever.
Excellent.
Well, I do know when the drifters come to town and the campground is full, they usually park out by the community center as well. Would that be like an alternative option that we could give them if they wanted to like group camp or something? I know there's no showers or anything available, but for overflow camping, possibly?
Possibly. There may be, I'm not sure if there's any liability issues with that, but we could definitely look into it, for sure.
That requires permission from the Ag Society because that land is owned by them.
Okay, but we could, that's something we can definitely look into.
Any other thoughts or considerations in regards to this? No. All right, can I get a motion then to hold the start and finish line for the gravel experience at Centennial Park Campground?
I'll make a motion to hold the start and finish line at Centennial Park Campground.
Thank you councillor Zimmer. Question?
Moved by councillor Zimmer to hold the start and finish line for the Range Gravel Road Experience event, July 23rd, 2022, at Centennial Park Campground.
Any further discussion with this? All in favor? Motion passed. Then again, can we get a motion to set a $5 shower fee for riders at Centennial Park Campground after finishing the gravel road race?
I'll make a motion that we set a $5 shower fee for all riders.
Question?
Moved by councillor Schlussberger to set a $5 shower fee for the riders in the Range Gravel Road Experience at Centennial Park Campground after finishing the gravel road race on July 23rd, 2022.
Any further discussion with this?
I do have one question. Would it be just limited to riders or would we be able to extend that to their support teams or whatever?
I don't think there's particularly a lot of shower stalls for all of that, I guess.
Okay.
My assumption would be that within their entry fee, it'll all be included, so they'll just pay what they need to for that day and we'll just leave it open for whoever uses it.
Anything further? All in favor then? Motion passed. Moving on, can I get a motion to have the campground attendants reserve campsites for the event until May 31st, 2022, for riders to advance register?
I can move that.
Thank you councillor Kettles. Question?
Moved by councillor Kettles to have the campground attendant reserve campsites for the event until May 31st, 2022, for the riders in the Range Gravel Road Experience to advance register their sites. After that time, the campsites would be available as normal.
Any further discussion with that? All in favor? Motion passed. Moving on to number 13, request for decision, arena advertising, Abe?
Back in 2018, we updated or redid the arena advertising fee schedule after the new rink boards were installed. The first year advertising had a certain rate and in order to encourage returning advertisers, there was a reduced rate. And so in 2020, with COVID, the rates were reduced at 50%, just as a COVID measure. And essentially what we're looking at doing here is getting a motion from council to go to the pre-COVID rates where the advertising rates will return to what they were prior to COVID. So that policy is here and you can see the updated rates or the return to normal rates are included on here. No major changes, just looking to get back to the rate schedule that was prior to COVID-19. Any questions from council?
Councillor Kettles?
We're still very much under some COVID restrictions. I just wonder about the timing of such to change the rates when they're maybe not getting the eyeballs on their advertising that they would in a normal year just yet. I'm not sure how much impact that would have to revenues and such, but seems to me we're still under some restrictions and for the advertisers.
In the last, for the season this year, I mean, the rink is packed every weekend. There's people in there, there's skating clubs going. I think they're pretty much back to what they're getting for their dollar, what they paid when they started. We gave them a break for two years in regards to lack of people in the rink and stuff, but I think it's up to that status quo part now for getting their eyes out there, so.
Currently as an advertiser, I think a lot of us advertise more as a donation to the rink itself than the actual advertising purpose of it. If there are spots that are, that become open because we go back to the initial rate, I can see them being filled quite quickly, so I have no issues with this.
Good to know.
All of my thoughts and concerns rolled up into small conversation. Thank you. Anything else? Any other questions, comments? All right then. So are we able to get a motion to accept the revisions to 5.7.50 arena advertising fee policy then?
Hold on, man.
Move that, please.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Carlson.
It's okay, Mike. I just want him to read out the whole thing.
And the motion is just going to be slightly different if the rate's effective as of September 1st? Is that okay?
I agree to that.
Sorry, when were these new rates to start?
September 1st.
Nope.
All right. Question?
Moved by councillor Carlson to adopt policy number 5.7.50 version 1.1, the arena advertising fee policy as presented, effective September 1st, 2021.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passed. All right. Moving on to number 14, information brief by Atrium Cole, Abe?
Another congratulations from a group on the municipal election as well. This one is from the group that's looking to develop mining on the east slope. I believe this group came to council back in May, looking to connect, possibly gain support from the group. And council passed on that invitation at the time, and it's come back to council again. So I'm not sure if council has, existing returning councillors rather, have anything to add to that? Any insight on that visit from the last time?
It's very informative. I enjoyed their presentation, but I decline to support their position, so.
Any further comments? Councillor?
As we've seen from some of the things that have been fired back from the environmental reviews, it still has a heck of a long way to go, and I perceive that this will be on our desk for another five to 10 years before we see anything happen out of it. But due to those concerns not being met, I will decline supporting it at this time as well.
Any further comments in regards to this? Yeah. I like the idea of jobs, but I don't like the idea of rest. Unfortunately at this moment, they still, I agree, they still have a long way to go in regards to all of this, so. So at this time, I guess we can just take this for information and decline as long as everyone's in favor of that at this moment. All right. Number 15, information brief, councillor committee reporting.
Yeah, we're actually looking for a decision here on this one.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's not your fault. It's just labeled incorrectly. But we did talk at the last council meeting about a reporting process. Council was interested in some kind of committee reporting process. What we've detailed here is that we can have a template, a council committee report template, and councillors can email myself or Corinne with their board activity from the previous couple of weeks, just updating what board they attended and what the nature of the business was. And that would go under information items on the agenda, and it would give council a chance to talk about what the other councillors are up to. If council's in favor of that process, just a motion to approve that process and we can start that. One caveat, that this shouldn't replace, shouldn't be an avenue for the committees to have the councillors put requests to council on a committee report. Rather, those should be formal requests for fees or services or anything like that, right?
I want to make sure that Abe has eyes on these reports to make sure we don't have any conflict of interest or FOIP issues.
For sure.
Thank you.
What did you say in the beginning? You want Abe to see all of it?
So then they should come right to me. Yeah, and I'll put them into the template and then put them on the server and then Corinne can upload them.
The template of the report, will that be provided to us? Because I could fill out a template of a report as long as I have access to it to give to you this proof, make sure I didn't put a name or, you know, something that's not appropriate, but.
Well, I can just put council committee reports and then I can have each councillor, basically a little spreadsheet, each councillor, and then you can just, council can just email me and I could plug that right in. And so it would work that way as well.
I concur.
Sure, let's try it that way.
Yeah, and I'll develop the template, I'll throw it out your way. How's that sound? Develop a template and throw it out your way and kind of, you can keep the template and you can submit your report on that template if you want, or you can just email it to me.
Is that something, sorry?
No, go ahead.
Is that something we're looking to do in January? I know a couple of my boards don't meet in December.
Yeah.
Those types of things. Are we looking for this like a January start?
We, whenever, whenever you say you want to start it.
I think January would be a good start and it gives you some time to get through to create that template and all of us to review it prior to.
Yeah.
Any further discussion with this?
I will make a motion to approve the council committee reporting process as presented.
Thank you councillor Cutler. Question?
Moved by councillor Cutler to approve the council committee reporting process as presented to begin in January 2022.
Any further discussion with this? All in favor? Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on to 16, information brief, the AUMA report, Abe?
I'm not sure if this one made it in the agenda package.
No.
But I did prepare just a little bit of information on the council's AUMA conference. Essentially some background information on AUMA, that they're an advocacy group for municipalities throughout towns and villages and cities throughout the province. And every year, they have an AGM where the municipal councils are members and they approve a board and they also have a whole slew of resolutions that the board and the membership, rather, vote on. And if those motions are approved, the AUMA, then now Alberta municipalities, over the next year, has marching orders and often these are issues and items that are particular concern to the general population throughout the province. And so I just wanted to have that kind of report if anybody from council wanted to talk about the highlights. One of the highlights I had was that the council here was able to meet with Minister Maciver, Minister of Municipal Affairs, and to discuss concerns regarding the province lifting the requirement, legislative requirement for municipalities to have a code of conduct bylaw. And so council was able to have a face-to-face with that minister and he indicated that they would not be pursuing that interest and that they had heard back from a number of municipalities enough that they were no longer interested in pursuing that. So, but yeah, if council would like to do a follow-up, maybe perhaps roundtable or anybody who's interested in talking about some of the highlights, I think that would be good information for the public to know.
Any discussion?
Sure. I think the AUMA or AM convention or AGM is a very critical piece around how we can connect and network and get to understand the different diversities of the different communities within Alberta in one central area. One thing I found quite interesting this year was the difference in the resolutions and it wasn't a hyper-focused kind of a direction. They kind of got their hands on a little bit of everything to help the municipalities understand the difference with the cutbacks and the restraints and the grant funding. And to hear multiple different views from multiple different areas of the province that were all struggling with kind of some of the same stuff, that we do have the AUMA slash AM there to advocate on behalf of us. And it is critical for first timers, even second timers who've gone or third timers who've gone to a couple of these things. I just find it critical in a way to be able to understand what's going on outside our bubble and see what the other people are doing and how they're managing some of the crises that we struggle with as well. And I think it's very vital to the growth of Clerstham to have that aspect and to be able to bring that back to Clerstham to grow. So I was very enjoyable. On top of that, it's also a nice team bonding issue, situation with new councillors and new mayor to get to kind of know each other outside of the plastic shields and stuff. And so, I mean, I think AUMA was very beneficial for all of us this year and I'm glad that we were able to go up there and pull some stuff out of it, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? I know it was definitely great for me, all of the networking and then being able to advocate for our community was something I seen as extremely beneficial at that convention, so I very much enjoyed it.
As a new councillor, I found it very useful. And I must say, I was struck, especially in the question and answer session with the deputy ministers, of how many different municipalities have many of the same concerns and problems that we have. And I think it's a great way for, you know, us to communicate in a bigger sense than just the seven of us around this table. I think it's a resource that we have to take advantage of.
Thank you. Anyone further?
Pretty much all been said already. It was informative and it was great to get to know everybody a little better as well.
All right. Moving on, we'll take that for information. We can move on to number 17 then, I guess. Information brief, the CAO report, Abe?
Yeah, all the department heads are able to provide updates on what their activities were for the last month. This is a monthly report that comes to the council agenda. That's there for your information.
Anything stand out to anyone? Any questions? Comments, concerns with these?
Just take it for information.
Take it for information. All right, moving on to number 18, information brief, council resolution status. Abe?
That's a status on the resolutions that we receive from council at the council meetings. Any questions on progress on any of those items or lack thereof on any of those items? Any questions on progress on any of those items or lack thereof on any of those items?
All looks pretty good.
Take that for information as well. All right. We have an adoption of the information items then, moving on to 19.
I can move though.
Thank you, Counselor Carlson. Do we need a second for that as well? Nope, all right.
All in favor?
All in favor. Motion to adapt the information items. Can I get a motion to move into camera for A personnel FOIP section 17 and B personnel FOIP section 17?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Meister. Can I get a motion? Any questions before that? All right, all in favor? Camera off. All right, motion to come out of camera.
I'll make the motion to come out of camera.
Thank you, Counselor Meister. All in favor? Motion to come out of camera. Do we need a motion to start to resume regular meeting? Nope. No, we can just go ahead and motion for an appointment to the library?
Yes.
I'm going to declare a conflict of interest.
Counselor Meister's left the room at 8:26 PM. Can we get a motion to elect, oh, excuse me, to elect someone for the, sorry.
Point?
Appoint, thank you, for the Claris Home, appoint a person for the Claris Home Public Library Board.
I move to elect or appoint Donna Meister to the Claris Home Library Board.
Thank you. Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to appoint Donna Meister to the Claris Home Library Board.
Any further questions or discussions with this? No, all in favor? Motion passed to elect Donna. And we have Counselor Meister re-enter at 8:27 PM. And moving on for an appointment to board member for the museum, can I have a nomination?
I'll nominate Barry Wood to sit on the museum board for Claris Home.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to appoint Barry Wood to the Claris Home Museum Board.
Any further discussion with this? All in favor? Motion passed. And I believe that's.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Motion by Counselor Carlson to adjourn this meeting. Oh, camera off, thank you.